Good evening, afternoon. Thank you for coming. We have prepared a presentation, if you will. There is a lot of information to disseminate. We're going to go pretty quickly because we would like to mostly hear from you. So if we say something that you want us to circle back to when we get into the Q and A, or actually the comments, please don't hesitate to say, "What did you say?" when back at the beginning. So we have a scripted presentation and some slides behind us that folks will be presenting. We hope that will take about 20 minutes and then we'll be able to open it up for the public hearing to take comments. So I apologize that I'm going to read this. Welcome and thank you for coming tonight and thank you to all that have attended earlier, written or otherwise contributed comments and suggestions in previous planning commission meetings. The commission has been engaged in this process of renewing the bylaws for several years, from determining a process to tackle and modernize them to then moving through a methodology in a thoughtful and reasonable manner. It has involved countless hours of volunteer time. Along the way, the planning commission has experienced changes in commissioners and changes in town staffing, all of which contribute to a broader set of ideas. These commissioners here tonight bring a plethora of experiences, residency in our town, land use planning, and GIS technology backgrounds to the thoughtful recommendations in the UDB Phase 1 documents. And you'll hear us refer to UDB, that's Unified Development Bylaws Phase 1. These regulations are not final. Our goal here tonight is to continue taking public input on the process, on the proposed regulations and bylaws, and to use that input to make changes that, in our judgment, is appropriate. In fairness to the commission, we need to discuss your input before we can make those decisions. Please don't expect us to be answering your questions or revising the document itself tonight. I'd like to make some introductions. As I said, my name is Martha Staskis. I'm chair of the commission. To my left is Katie Gallagher, our vice chair, Mary Cohen, and Dana Allen. Billy Vigor is also on the commission and was not able to be here tonight. And for those of you who have not yet met our tremendous planning and zoning team, we have Neil Lightner back here as our planning director, and we have Mike Bishop here at the table, who will be here for about 45 minutes and then has to depart as our zoning From the public hearing notice, I just want to state the purpose of this meeting. We're here tonight to convene the first of two public hearings to obtain public feedback regarding proposed updated zoning bylaws, the Unified Development Bylaws Phase 1. The second public hearing will be held Thursday, March 14, 2024. These bylaws supersede the Town and Village of Waterbury zoning regulations as amended through May 16, 2016. We'll refer to those as the 2016 zoning regulations. It's only for the downtown, mixed-use, neighborhood, campus, commercial-industrial, residential one, and conservation floodplain zoning districts depicted in the zoning district map. And they are included in Section 1611. The zoning districts in Phase 1 are bound to the south of I-89, north of the Winuski River, and the east-west by the town boundaries of Bolton and Middlesex. All of the requirements of the 2016 zoning regulations with respect to application processing, review procedures, including but not limited to the zoning permit issuance and design, conditional use, site plan, and subdivision review, continue to apply in the UDB Phase 1 zoning districts. Any development that, including that requiring site plan review, shall meet, in addition to Section 301, the standards and requirements of these bylaws. These bylaws supersede the interim bylaws for the downtown zoning district that were adopted in April 26, 2021, once they go through and are adopted by the select board. So we have a process that we're going through, okay? But we want to just be really clear, this is only for the Phase 1 section, which is this downtown, basically the downtown area, and you'll see it come up on the maps. Who's next? Mary.
We really appreciate you all coming out tonight, and if you have a question or comment, we're going to ask you to, you know, kind of take turns, keep to a two-minute time limit. If you, if a question comes up, though, all those little facsimiles of an index card, pieces of paper, if you'd like to leave a comment that either we don't have time to get to it, but I think we probably will with the number of people here today, if we have, we're going to have a two-minute time limit, as I said. If you have more that you want to say, you can come back. We have a sign-up sheet for speaking, but I don't know if we really actually need to do that with a small crowd, so we were kind of prepared for various sizes. It's all unknown. But this, as Martha said, this is the first of two public hearings, and because it's an official public hearing, we really need you to state your name and part of town that you live in, if you'd like. And what, I'm not sure what's on the screen behind me.
Logistics.
Okay.
They're following.
I've been riding herd on Neil.
Good, good, good. So the key information is, you know, Neil Lightner, his email and telephone number, if any questions come up for you. And as Martha said, we're still working on this, so we consider input. We've already made some changes from our first informational sessions we had in the fall. And our hope is to be able to turn this over to the select board in April. We have, we're going to, we have a, I was going to try to talk about the components, but I think without seeing what they are, it's just a bunch of words. But on the town website, we have those, I'm just going to read from here.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, it's a little different, so I'm just, I should watch Dana.
He's going to follow you.
My apologies. So background for the revision, there's some good information on the town website about why we're doing this and sort of what our overarching goals and objectives are. The draft document is there for you to read and look at, and then there's a slider map of illustrating the proposed zoning district revisions. And when we say slider map, you can look at a part of town, a street, your own property, what it was zoned in, what it currently is zoned in, and what we're proposing that the zoning changes are. We have also a link on our, the planning and zoning website that will direct you to story maps and storyboards and some illustrations, some of which you're able to look at here to dimensional standards. These were done by a consulting group, SE Group, who's helped us with public outreach, and we were able to do that through a bylaw modernization grant from the state. So I think that's all, just logistically, I will be the timekeeper, but we'll try to go through the questions and comments to get everybody in.
Dana.
Yeah. Okay, great. So as has been, I'm going to stand up. I can't sit down. As has been discussed, this is the Phase 1 area, so we're not talking about the entirety of town. So just to clarify again, can you bring it back to the map? Uh-oh. There we go. So Phase 1 area, it's primarily downtown area. You can see bounded by the highway and the river, and then it does extend out, so again, bounded by the highway and the river. So that's the Phase 1 area that we're talking about. Next slide. So the background and primary goals of this are essentially to become in line with the 2018 Town Plan. Our pre-existing regulations were 2016. Town Plan was published in 2018. So this has been an ongoing process to basically update these bylaws to be in line with the goals of that 2018 plan. We did pay special attention to that plan when developing these bylaws. So if you have any questions, that's a great document to read. But one of the things that we really wanted to do in this is, you know, it talks a lot about housing density and commercial vibrance in the downtown, so that's a big part of these bylaws. There's also compliance with recent state activities, so S-100 or Act 47, which is a housing act. We're not going to get into the specifics of that this evening, but that does include special provisions for downtown areas like ours that are on water and sewer, provisions primarily for residential development. And so again, we're trying to come into line with recent legislation with these bylaws. As I said, increased housing density, diverse mix of uses, combined uses on the same parcel within the same building. Again, we want to give people flexibility and diversity in the downtown that's so important for us. Smart growth principles, this is something that's been consistent in Vermont development for years, but we're trying again to densify in a way that makes great use of space while also recognizing that there are some challenges, notably flood resilience after 2023. I don't know if you're like me, but you have PTSD from flooding. And so we want to recognize that we need to do something about that to the greatest degree possible. We do have flood hazard regulations that are pre-existing. Those are part of these bylaws as well, not specifically addressed in these. Can we go to the next slide? So we did try to simplify, so we're limiting the number of zoning districts. We're actually reducing the total number of zoning districts, and so we're kind of combining a lot of uses and things like that. So we're trying to streamline this process for the average user. Really, one of the things is that we're giving people a bit more flexibility to build more on their parcels, smaller parcels. We're giving people the ability to build a bit higher than in the past. And so I really encourage you to look at the dimensional standards, you know, pre-post, like 2016 versus these bylaws, and think about that. We really want to give people the opportunity to use more of their land in this Phase 1 area, if possible. So that's spreading out and spreading up. Floodplain challenges, acknowledging those. Oh, can you go back? Sorry. God, Neil, we didn't practice, did we? Yeah. No, we go back, back, back. There we go. Okay. Oh, right. And then neighborhoods, that's a big important part of this. This is our residential core. We also want to provide flexibility for certain uses within that that's not just housing. And we also want to provide the development review board with additional clarity in their process. They've got a big job, and so we're trying to make their lives easier and your lives as well. Next slide. Some of the highlighted revisions, home occupations have changed. There's more clarity there, I should say, so definitely review that. I definitely think that looking at building structure heights, increasing in downtown mixed-use in the campus district, really across the board, look at the dimensional standards and think about that. That's something that's definitely changing between 2016 and now. Lot allowances are changing. We're allowing for more development on lots. We're also allowing for smaller lots, generally speaking. Again, increasing density. We formalized this new campus district. Before, we had a campus overlay. Now we have a campus district that is primarily the state-owned parcels. That in particular, we did allow multifamily housing in that district, again, in recognition of the fact that we do want to develop more housing in our downtown area, and that is a relatively large open space to do that. Not going to get into S-100 requirements. We do have a lot of things there, but there are some things about single-family zoning in certain areas. Now that goes to duplex in certain cases. Again, I really don't want to get into the details of that particular legislation tonight. This is more about our bylaws, but that rides on top of these bylaws. So and the other big change here is that in the new downtown and mixed-use zoning districts, single-family dwellings will no longer be allowed, and that again is to try to encourage housing density in these areas by having more duplexes or multifamily dwellings in our downtown core. Next slide. So really, we recommend review of the appendix, we're calling it the appendix. It's essentially the use tables. So the use table is organized by districts and then by use on each row, and it tells you essentially what's allowed in each one of these districts by use, what size, whether it's permitted, conditional, or not allowed. And then there are definitions for essentially all of those uses. So if you're confused as to what something might be, please go to the definitions and see what that is. But review the use tables and also definitely review the dimensional standards tables, as those will have a big impact on development, and those are big changes. And that's me.
I think that's you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Okay, so we're just going to fly through the different zoning districts that we have. Zoning districts, there's changes in names that we'll talk about. Dana just went through some of the higher-level changes, boundaries, purpose statement. So we're just going to go through the purpose statement because I think it's helpful to just get that context of what we're trying to achieve for each district. But as we mentioned before, one of the overarching goals of the process was to streamline the multiple districts that we had already into a fewer number and making them a bit more flexible for what people could do on their properties. So one thing I just want to mention as well is that in trying to follow kind of best planning practices, another overarching goal was to increase densities within our downtown, kind of having that core, and then have it spread out into, as you saw on the map before, kind of on the, either end, we have that conservation floodplain district. And so development is getting more concentrated and more dense as you go to the center of town.
You want to mention these?
Sure, yeah. So if folks didn't see already, on the table, there's the dimensional standards for each of the districts, so those will provide a lot more details that I'm not going to talk here because we could talk about it forever, but that is helpful. And also, as you mentioned, all this information is on the website as well. Or actually, sorry, we can, sorry, stay in downtown district for one second. So downtown district hasn't changed too much in this, that red section, just as a note, that is also part of our designated downtown, so that's a lot of what the downtown district is based on. And here, we are trying to concentrate our commercial, our residential, other compatible uses in this area while maintaining our traditional pattern, scale, and massing, and supporting a pedestrian-oriented village center. Next one, please. So then kind of as we go out on, you still have that red in the middle of our downtown, orange, if you can see, sorry, the colors are a little mixed together, but that's going to be our mixed-use districts. And here, we're trying to allow for a variety of housing options and, as we mentioned, a mix of small-scale commercial service and other compatible uses. So again, kind of tapering out, but still maintaining and enhancing that kind of traditional village character. Next slide, please. So then we get into neighborhood, and that's going to be in those yellow sections. So this is a bit more of our residential neighborhoods, still near our public services, infrastructure, transportation. We're still within this walking distance to our downtown, so we do want to allow for some higher-density housing as well as neighborhood-compatible uses. So again, the idea here is trying to make it compatible with these areas as we're tapering out from the downtown. And then next slide, going out a bit further, residential one is in those kind of teal areas. Yeah, thank you, Neil. So out, outside on the edges there, and this is our residential uses in this more kind of rural setting, larger lot sizes, while also trying to minimize development impacts on our environmental quality out in those areas, which, if you can see as well, a lot of that is overlaid in blue because those are flood-prone areas. Next slide, please. So campus, as we mentioned, this is changing a campus, previous campus overlay to a new campus district, and this is the area with the state offices. And here, we are wanting to protect those architectural and historic resources that's in that beautiful area, but also support it as a place for potential commerce or housing, multifamily housing in particular, thinking about future potential uses. Next slide, please. So then we have commercial-industrial, so that's in purple, again, kind of in, on the edges, but also the pilgrim park close to downtown. And so here, we're looking to support new or expanded businesses in this area that's served by infrastructure, and this is including manufacturing and, in some cases, allowing for new multifamily development. And then next slide, please. So this is the final district. This is our new conservation floodplain. It's that light green that's on the edges and also on the south side of the campus district, and so this is floodplain areas that are largely already undeveloped. And so we're just trying to make sure that we are conserving that land and maintain it in a primarily unimproved kind of natural state. And I think that is our last slide, although I do want to mention that we also have a design review overlay district that already exists. We are updating that, and there's new location boundaries across the downtown in mixed-use districts.
As well as the campus district.
Thank you.
Yes, all inclusive of the downtown mixed-use and campus.
Can I have a point of clarification? Where are the boundaries of the downtown? It used to just be Patchoula Street to Parkway down north Maine. Now is it all the two-mile, mile stretch?
See the red area in here? So it goes from the, oh, I can't reach up there.
You need to give me a street.
Main Street, South Main Street, and I'm too close.
To the roundabout.
Yeah, to the roundabout up there, just shy of it, the bridge, all the way down to Park Row. This is Park Row, here's the park, the train station.
So is downtown the village? Or is village the downtown? Where do I live?
So we're conflating, so this is where.
Put up the slider map, okay? Just hold on a second. Let's put up the slider map. What's really, what's going to create a little confusion here, we understand, is the fact that we have reduced the number of zoning districts, okay? The other thing that I want to reiterate is the storyboards, what we call storyboards around the room, are all the districts that we're talking about tonight. So when, if we break up early, or if you have some questions, go, you can go look at those in particular. But yeah, there you go. So, hold on. So the solid red is downtown, the orange is mixed-use, the yellow is what we call neighborhood now, the blue is the new campus district, purple is commercial-industrial, and then this green is called conservation floodplain. And I want to note that the conservation floodplain parcels are, we looked at the specific parcel ownership, and they're basically GMP, the railroad, they're utility, and town-owned parcels. So we're not impacting a private residence parcel because the conservation floodzone district really has no development in it, okay? And we didn't want to be impacting any private landowners. So before, I just want to give the board, the commission, another chance to wrap up any other comments, and then we would like to circle through the questions that you folks may have. We're small enough, we had planned that we would like you to come up to the podium. I think if we can do it just sitting, we're fine with that, but we need to just do it on an orderly process because we're also taking notes on the comments, and so we want to get the comments recorded. And I would ask that you not expect us to give you a specific answer or adjustment. We're really here for a public hearing, hearing you folks, okay? Mary?
So the term downtown is used in three different ways for this part of town, is my experience. One is there is a state-designated downtown district, and that is really separate from our town zoning. There is, and so we have, part of our current downtown is state-designated, and some of it will stay within the red, the downtown, some of it is mixed-use, some of it is, you know, all of the downtown is not in the state-designated. So they don't totally overlap, so that's one doubt. We have a zoning district that we're calling downtown zoning district. We also have, there is currently, in the current regulations, there is a downtown design overlay district, and we're proposing changes to that in terms of the conditions and the bylaws, what's allowed, what has to, the DRB has to consider, but we're not calling it downtown design review, we're just calling it design review overlay district. And we have matched that to the boundaries in this section of town, zoning district downtown, zoning district mixed-use. So we, we don't mean to confuse you by saying that there's, you know, downtown.
I think an easy way to answer this is, are you talking about the mile-long village and the zoning areas within that from?
Essentially.
Okay. Because you began by saying you were only going to be talking about the downtown, since I'm on South Main and it's mixed-use. I thought, geez, I shouldn't even be here.
No, no, no.
That's why the downtown gets confusing.
The discussion, well, let's be clear, the discussion tonight for Kathy, the discussion tonight includes everything from the town boundary of Bolton to Middlesex to the Winuski River to the interstate, okay? That's the area of Waterbury Town that we're talking about, okay? And it's the zoning districts within that Phase 1. We call that Phase 1, okay?
Thank you.
Sure. Good question.
So I would, how are you? So you don't want the podium? You just want to call on people?
Well, I would say if you have a question at this point, we could raise your hand, as long as we can hear you. Yep, you have to state your name, and we'd prefer if you just give us an idea of where you live so we can put it in perspective. I have a hand behind you.
I'm Jeff Wille, and I live on High Street. And I just wanted, first of all, thank you guys for everything you're doing, and I appreciate that you took into consideration a lot of us citizens' ideas and put High Street and some of those other neighborhoods in the neighborhood district. That was awesome.
Jeff, I'm going to ask you to stand up. You may need to come to the podium.
I get this all the time, especially in my life. No, but thank you for taking into, you know, citizens' comments and tweaking the zones and taking High Street and putting that in the neighborhood district. I really appreciate that, and I'm sure my neighbors do too. Going back to, we were just talking about just like, what are you considering downtown and what's, and then the downtown district. So the all-encompassing downtown Phase 1, is that going to be, is that going to have like a downtown overlay district to it for a design review?
So the, there is a, there is now, we're proposing a design review overlay district. We call it the DROD, just to give it a romantic name. The design review overlay district will include all of the downtown, the red.
Downtown zoning district.
Whoops, what happened to our map?
We're getting it.
Okay. The downtown, the missed, the downtown zoning district, the mixed-use zoning district, and the campus zoning district, okay?
Okay. I guess my only comment to that is.
Zoom away from that, please, and then show the entire extent. So this, so just to clarify, just to like, show you again.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
This area, town boundary to town boundary, river to highway, is Phase 1. That is the, that's what's included in this bylaw update. So that's Phase 1. So when we talk about what we're updating, we're updating all of Phase 1. There is an area, the downtown zoning district, which is part of this. There is an area, the downtown zoning district, which is part of this, and then there's what we colloquially refer to as downtown, this general area. So just so we're clear, phase one, downtown zoning district.
Overlay.
Overlay district is in red here and encompasses mixed use, downtown, mixed use, and the campus. Does that clarify?
Yeah, no, I'm good, yeah, great. And so I guess my comment to that is, I know I've mentioned this in past meetings, and just going to continue to mention it. I really, I'm, I'm the first to not tell anybody what to do with their property, and I really hate that, that I have to mention this, but I feel like the entire phase one should have some sort of design review process in place because I feel like it's, I think it's good that we're decreasing setbacks and increasing height limits to allow, to allow us to build more. But I think if we're building more, we're amplifying whatever hat comes into our village. And we went through all this process to become the historical downtown Waterbury district. What, what historic value do we have if we don't have any design constraints to protect the natural aesthetics of our village? And the perfect example of that, and I hate to beat, to beat a dead horse, but you know, the, the, the nine needed up on High Street, Hill Street, that's, that can only get bigger and more amplified, and in my opinion, more atrocious, if we don't have some sort of guidelines to constrain how we're building and the design behind that process for these other districts.
Okay. Also, we just finished, I need your help. We, we just updated, is the, is the DROD online now?
The new map?
No, the requirements.
It's part of this.
Oh, it is online.
Yeah. So be sure to check online because it just went up recently. I mean, this is an interim process for sure. There are design review overlay district criteria, and I suggest you look at those specifically, and if you have comments on those with respect to the neighborhood zoning district, let us know. All right?
It's, I think we said it. It's on page thirty-one of the draft.
I want you to look at the whole document.
Well, that's true. You said go find it, so I'm trying to tell her.
We, I think Mary said this before, if you don't provide a comment here tonight written, you can always send it to Neil online. You can always email it to Neil or drop it off at Neil. He, he just loves getting that. All right. Next?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Could you set his name and talk?
Oh, I think you can hear me. My name's Lawrence Dennis, I'm on ten Randall Street. Quick question on downtown apartment option? Am I reading this correct? It can be six stories?
Sixty feet.
Sixty feet, but it says that there's six, I'm just asking for clarification, is that what that means?
And we did go through this a lot, and in terms of readability of the bylaws, a story is dimensionless. It's not, there's no number of feet typically associated with it, at least we can enforce. So we just went with actual dimensions, but yeah, sixty feet is the height limitation in downtown.
Okay.
Just in the downtown zoning district, not in the colloquial downtown. Sorry to beat that horse.
Technically, a property that met the minimum requirements, somebody could buy that property, tear that property down, and build that size property.
Sixty feet.
Sixty feet, oh, that, I'm just clarifying.
Yep.
We also.
Thank you.
We also have more extensive requirements for demolishing any property within, within the design overlay district.
Clarify?
I'm sorry, I took some medication. My mouth is very dry, so I apologize. The design overlay district includes a component.
You want me to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the design review overlay district includes a section about demolition and the requirements necessary if you propose to demolish the building.
Oh, good.
Okay? And, and I don't, we don't need to go into it here, but there are specific requirements. You can't just come in and wipe out a building and put something else.
It's going to be a little harder, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Especially if it's an historic.
That's, that's our point, yeah.
But that would also follow up with what we talked about with properties that are damaged or not being taken care of.
That's right.
Thank you.
I'm going to stand over here because when he was talking and his back was twisted, it was very hard to hear.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, first of all. One is, I live in a community that you now have changed to mixed use, but yet High Street is staying in the neighborhood. We have ten single residences down there that have been there forever now, and now it sounds like, for example, mine's a single residence. If I sell that house, that means somebody can't use that as a single residence anymore?
Change it. It would, yes, they can use it as a single residence, okay? It would be, it, they can change the, they can change the use, but they couldn't go back to it.
It becomes what we would call a nonconforming use. So it can, it's allowed to continue to exist to be what it is, but if someone wanted to do something fundamentally different with it, they couldn't necessarily expand it into a larger single-family dwelling or something like that. So it doesn't preclude the use, it preserves the use as a nonconformity. And then going forward, if someone wanted to, you know, build something different, single-family dwelling and mixed use wouldn't be an option for them. So duplex or.
But it could be a duplex.
The other problem I had was that there's a huge difference between the setbacks in the neighborhood district and the mixed use district. And the biggest one is the front. And I know I've been in up here meetings where you keep telling me, Kathy, there's no, most people would, you know, build right up to the front anyways. Maybe during the historical time, that was, you know, when the roads were smaller, that probably wasn't the case. But I did send you guys some pictures, and I talked to Neil about what's happening on my end of town. First of all, everybody has to back into the street, okay? We moved, spent several thousand dollars moving our carriage shed so that our tenants could come in, drive, turn around, and because of that, we lost lawn space. A lot of the places down there don't have any lawn space. And now you're saying that they can pretty much, I think, park on their lawn, right? I mean, what's to stop them from doing what some people have done already, and they created a parking lot on their front lawn, which looks terrible?
Okay, that's a time of Kathy.
So I got the notes.
I'm taking notes on it.
All right, I've got them. Thank you, Kathy.
I'll come back after.
No, this is great information.
Did you get the pictures, though?
I didn't get the pictures.
I sent. Nobody got them?
I believe, I believe I did see those. I think Neil sent those to us.
I'll send them again.
Way back.
Way back, okay.
Follow up question. Driveways are included, I was reading that. Can you clarify what that means? It says driveways included in updated bylaws. Does that mean?
What are you looking at?
Oh, this is neighborhood zoning. It has it right in front. Does that mean you calculate the driveway in the square footage of usage? Is that what that means?
The way that, the way that the dimensional standards now work is that previously in the 2016 regs, we had a sort of a density requirement. And that sort of limited or dictated to some degree development. Now, we went in the direction of doing a simpler lot coverage, so saying that in any particular zone, for any particular lot, you can have X percentage coverage. And so it ranges anywhere from like full coverage in the downtown district to less. Included in that coverage calculation, lot coverage calculation, are essentially any impervious surfaces. And so we use the state's definition of impervious surface, but essentially that's any development. So buildings, but also driveway footprints, parking lots, patios are also included, things like decks or not. So anything where rain doesn't soak into the ground is now considered part of lot coverage. So if you had a relatively small house and a relatively large parking lot or driveway, that could impact your lot coverage, and vice versa, you know?
But we want to keep that greens, we want to have some green space here. So that's why we're maximizing the lot coverage.
That makes sense, thank you for the clarification.
Please.
So I have a, North Main Street here. Does the current overlay, Mike Merchant. Does the current overlay district, is that going to apply to the new zoning exactly how it's written now?
The design.
Design review.
Review overlay district will apply to the downtown district.
I understand that.
The mixed use and the campus.
No, no, we have new.
As being proposed here.
We have new regulations.
New regulations.
Right. So once the select board either approves or disapproves of these proposed bylaws, this is what will take effect. It doesn't take effect until it's approved by the select board.
Are those online too, the current proposed?
Page thirty, yeah, page thirty-one is the design review overlay.
Can you? Hold on, okay, just a second. Did we answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I find that a lot of that can be, rulings on, on the overlay district can be inconsistent, like, is it so clear that they can't be, like, are the rules the rules, or I mean, are there, are there, can you get like a, like?
I know what you're heading, so there are, we've tried, we took that, we had a lot of conversation about specificity versus not, paint color versus siding, and those are, and they're listed.
Materials.
Right. And so I really don't want to comment on them specifically, you really need to read them. But it, there is an exemption in there specifically to paint color, that's the one that always sticks in my brain, siding, roofing, okay? Whether it's a routine maintenance, whether it's a significant, we tried, at the request of the DRB, quite frankly, was to be as clear, not to use descriptive adjectives that say, you know, major change, minor, what constitutes a major change, right?
Like, is there room for variances there?
Right, right. So tell us if we.
What page is it on?
Thirty-one, it starts on page thirty-one. We, we tried to be both more specific and not as prescriptive.
Arbitrary.
Right. And arbitrary, right, right. Correct.
Many meetings as I've been to, I still don't understand what the overlay means. Is that, you take, can you explain it in terms of few bits?
We have base zoning districts, which, in which, I'm sorry. I had it clear in my head, it's not coming out. The base zoning districts lay out just sort of the base of what can be done in that district. And then an overlay district is exactly as it sounds, it overlays on top of those base zoning district requirements.
So think about it, like, a base, the base zoning districts, downtown mixed use neighborhood, they have a list of allowed uses, conditional uses that start you, okay? And then, for example, I'm just going to read the purpose statement of the design overlay, the design review overlay district. Establishes specific building form, design standards, and a higher level of review for proposed development for those areas of Waterbury recognized as having particular historical, architectural, or cultural value. So we're, and the purpose of that is to protect and enhance those architectural and historical resources, to encourage a consistently high standard of design in, in new construction and renovations, to support and sustain the pedestrian-oriented downtown, and to strengthen the community's vitality and the downtown mixed use district's historic function as a center for commerce, industry, government, and housing. And lastly, to encourage the new construction that will reinforce the qualities of the existing physical character while allowing freedom of expression compatible with the architectural vernacular. So we didn't want to say you can't have a pink house, but if it's not consistent with what's in the downtown mixed use or campus, then you're probably not going to have a pink house, okay? It needs to be consistent with the architectural vernacular of the community.
So the overlay basically means additional rules.
Yeah, it's to try to maintain the existing, I mean, use is carefully, character of the town.
But we also have an over, the floodplain is, regulations are in essence an overlay because, and they apply all, you know, to that FEMA map, so we have a couple overlaid in.
Changes are in here.
Are there other questions?
Well, wait, we got them coming here. Mike, you want to come up?
I think I can do it from here as well. My name's Mike Hedges, or William Michael Hedges, if you're really getting formal. And I live on Henry Huff Road, so not in this phase one area. But I just want to be involved and curious, and I do thank you folks for the very hard work that this has taken to get here, because I, I know it has. I'm just curious about that overlay review, overlay review area. And it just, you just stated that it has a higher level of review, but it didn't sound like there was any review, DRB review outside of that district?
Anything, let's see, I'm going to get this, make sure I get this right. Application to the town, all applications require site plan approval. This would be another level of approval in the applicable zoning districts of mixed use downtown and campus in phase one.
So my other question is, is overlay district, how does that relate to the historic designated district?
They, they could be overlapping, but they're not.
Exactly. Because that's a designation outside of our zoning.
Right.
Right. We've not addressed, we're not making any changes to the historic district. If you have a historic. Yeah, districts, thank you, Mary. If you have a national registered, you know, I'm going to say this wrong, national registered historic places home, you're following those requirements, okay? We're not addressing that here.
There's a district as well, and homes outside of that.
And, and some other, like, spot districts.
Is that, get it?
Question.
Wait, let's see, do we answer your question?
Were particularly sensitive to that historic district when you made the overlay area?
No.
No, this is to capture those three zoning districts.
Yep.
I'm wondering where the, the village historical district.
Valerie Rogers, South Main Street. Thank you.
I am wondering about the district of the village historical district, and also is the overlay district, like, more important than the district? Like, which one trumps which?
They're, they're work in tandem.
They're added.
So think about the base zoning district is primarily what is an allowed use, what is a not allowed use, what's a conditional use, what the use of it.
What size.
And what the dimensional standards are that follow that district. So we've talked about setbacks, we've talked about lot coverage, those kind of dimensional criteria. And then the design review overlay district addresses more of what are the requirements of the structure, or what material, when a change needs to be made, excuse me, when a change, when you're proposing a repair or a change to the structure, what, what can be done and what can't be done.
So there'll always be like two committees looking at your permit.
Well, it's the one, it's the design review board that will look at it. You may have two conditions that you have to be, to have to be addressed. So you look at the downtown district, do I meet all the criteria of the downtown, and then do I also meet the design overlay review requirements in my proposal?
And, and some, some towns have a separate design review committee. We're, we're not there. We're, yeah, we're not doing that. So it's not really two different reasons.
And so the village historical district is, encompasses something on a storyboard here? Or is it the downtown, the village, like?
I'm confused what you mean by the village historical district.
I think there's a Waterbury historical district, and I'm wondering where it fits into this.
That's not changed.
But where is it?
It's not on these maps.
Is it the red?
It's not on these maps.
It's what?
It is not on these maps.
It's not on maps, okay.
So you've just identified something we need to address, the purpose of this meeting.
And also the zoning district.
It's not a zoning district.
And the utility district is also a utility, it's another district, but that's not on here either, right? That's another separate.
Exactly.
All right, so it is complicated.
Yeah.
Yes.
I can't get it.
No, it's technically, no, it's, yeah.
We're, we're not here to, we're definitely not here to tell you that this isn't complicated. It is complicated, and it is important, and it does take a lot of time, so if you're confused.
Join the party.
It's fine. Like, that's, that's, I mean, we've spent a lot of time with this, and there are still points of order that we have to identify and that sort of thing.
And I keep asking for your time.
I do think I put this village, I do think I put E-Fod on that map. I do think I put this village...I do think I put EFUD on that map. It's just hard to see.
Yeah. We'll talk about how that can be represented with the planning with Neil and Mike as to how to get that up on the website.
Because it is obviously important to people, so.
Yes.
Amy Anderson, 25 North Main. I have a few questions. The first, I think, kind of talks about what you guys were just discussing, the historical district and all the overlays and stuff. But we live in the historical district. So when I looked at the setbacks being zero, um, and we've always have had a challenge because our house is practically on our property line. So I was, in one way, glad to not have to go through the waiver process. But in the other way, I was terrified that a neighbor could come in and build a house touching our house. But because, if I'm understanding correctly, the overlay district would protect that because of the DRB process, that that just wouldn't be something, because it's a historical district, that could possibly be approved. Is basically what you're saying? Am I right?
No, no, not quite. If the zoning district allows for a zero setback, that's allowed. If you want to come in and build something right up to that, that could be approved. So the his...the design overlay district tells you, you don't...it doesn't matter what color you paint it. It doesn't...you can apply for...what's the other, um...
So...so then, we are wanting Main Street to have no green space between houses, is what we're saying?
So can I clarify? So the only district that allows for zero foot setbacks is downtown, right? So just that downtown. So from essentially railroad bridge to Park Ave, only parcels touching Main Street. So in that stretch, yes, we are saying you wouldn't have to do setbacks. And the idea behind that is that we're trying to allow for the greatest amount of density in the center. So much like steel block and like basically Lower Stowe Street has no setbacks between some of those buildings. And that creates that contiguous building facade, which is, you know, it's representative of the character of that particular area. We're saying we'd like to potentially see that extent.
So that's the logic behind it. Where you're talking about, like, literally outside this door, the places that are the...like, where my house is, Sixth House is up on Main Street. You're talking about having them, house, 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 house touching each other.
Potentially, yes.
And also, we're... It's not...it's not house...it's not a single-family house. It's also a district that has business and commerce and government and churches and, you know, other non-residential functions. So we're trying to attract folks to the downtown, the commercial side of that, the grocery stores. It's not all residential.
But the parts that are, you are changing the bylaws to allow our houses to be on top of each other? Is the clarity I'm...
Infill, yep.
That's correct.
Thank you. And then, um, from understanding this, it could be up to five units as long as you have 4,000 square feet of property.
4,000 square feet is the law minimum? So 4,000 square feet is the law minimum?
Yep.
And then it's not necessarily up to five units? It's dictated by lot coverage. So again, like, in the 2016 zoning regulations, you did have density. So it's dwelling units per X square feet, right? So now we're going to a simpler measurement of essentially lot coverage. So in the downtown area, you can have 100% lot coverage. So again, mimicking sort of that like downtown feel where you have buildings and development covering the entirety of the lot. So that would be allowed. And then as far as the number of residential dwellings, uh, that's essentially dictated by the development that's intended there. So it could be commercial first floor, additional dwellings up from there.
So what prevents...so what decides? Like, previously, you had a 20,000 square foot lot to get the density of more than three units. So now you're saying...I couldn't understand the clarity from that? Are five units allowed or not?
Five units would be allowed.
Okay, that's...
Or more would be allowed as well. Because it's essentially, again, it's just lot coverage and minimum lot size plus any setback requirements and height. So those are kind of the guardrails in that, in any zoning district, right? Those are the guardrails.
Thank you. My third question is, are there grandfathers for things that are already existing? Such as, um, like, it sounded like there was, with the example that Kathy had, the single-family uses. And I was also thinking of people that have businesses and the requirements I read about, you know, soundproofing and between the floors and stuff. If you're not doing something new, you don't have to go back and invest money, correct?
Right.
Okay. And then what about short-term rentals? Now I have to put in a permit for a short-term rental that already exists in my property?
No.
So in our new zoning bylaws, we do have a definition for short-term rentals. And you can see that there's nothing in this particular document about registration or permitting.
Right.
It says it's a permitted use, so if you don't have it permitted, does that mean you can't do it? That's...
Oh, that's a...that's a fair question.
No, it means that it's permitted. It doesn't mean that it needs a permit.
It doesn't mean it need...
Right.
It, right.
That's...that's a...
Typically, you have to submit for permit to change use. And if you're changing use from residential to something like short-term rental, you would have to submit.
We do...we are not requiring a permit for a change of use if it's allowed in the district.
I just would recommend that you would add that in so that we can...
That it's clear, it's more clear.
Yeah, that's a good one.
It's more clear, yeah.
Okay, I see your...thank you. Those are good questions. I appreciate that.
Kathy? Looks like...looks like they have. You get to...
Okay.
You get to come to...
It kind of piggybacks actually on what Amy is saying. And I...it has to do with the setbacks on the sides, et cetera. I feel like in the beginning, when you had that Boston consultant, she was thinking like, you're going to be a city like Boston. We don't have underground power, et cetera. So for example, if you don't...if you allow people to build it up to the lines, how are they going to get to the electrical meters? How are they going to get to the pipes, you know, the hose bits and stuff like that? My son lives next to somebody, and the line is very close to his house. And the guy wouldn't even let him go over there to have the house painter's paint. And so he had to check with Mr. Lachbee. And basically, the state law is you're trespassing if the guy tells you not to go over there. So you...I think you're...we're going to create lots of legal problems for people that can't maintain their houses. My husband's a fireman, and he's been on for 56 years. How do they get in between? I...I feel like there's just some logistical things that everybody, that are still in the zoning laws that are related to when you had the Bostonian girl come here, and we're not a city. We don't have underground power down South Main or North Main. It's only in the middle. And I just...so I really would like you to revisit those and put more, you know, more than four feet between houses. And if you want to see what it looks like, go down to South Main, and you'll see where they have to go like this to go between their houses. And I don't think that's what you want to see.
Thank you. One of the...one of...I just generally, one of the things that the Planning Commission has looked at as an underpinning is how do we maximize growth, housing in particular, in the EFUD district where there is, there are...well, that's what we're looking at. But we're also...we're also try...I'm just sort of relaying some of the things that we... You may or may not agree with it, but that we really did consider and spend a lot of time on finding the right balance. The other piece is there are a lot of small lots. There are a lot of lots that are right up next to each other. And if somebody wants to just change a window, they got to get a permit because they don't meet the setbacks. So we're trying to reduce the paperwork that really doesn't change what homeowners have to do. I realize, you know, some part of the mixed-use, there are bigger...they are bigger lots and more space between the houses. But a lot of other, um, aspects of our mixed-use, they are right up on each other. So we're trying to...we're just trying to find the right balance, Kathy. That's all.
I'm saying, couldn't you grandfather those people? Because what happens is, a lot of people did something to their property, and maybe whoever was on the zoning commission by that time let it happen, and it affected someone else's. And I'll give you case in point. When the doctor's office was built, they put fill-in and put it up. I got flooded in July, and I got flooded in December. And both times, it was from water coming up the doctor's office. Got it from behind, this time on that side. And it just...and we keep thinking, oh, yeah, we have these great zoning laws. And you don't...I don't see anything in there that says, let's look around the place where you want to have something built. How does it affect the other people near you? And that scares me because I'm seeing that, you know? The ambulance is going to be down there. At least this time, the town is now finally going to take over that ditch that they didn't before, and we've been flooded twice. And I...one of the other things I sent you a long time ago was, why aren't you looking at the parts of the village? Well, there's...the whole village is in the floodplain, but it's not created equal. Are you getting your house bought out? Are you one of the ones getting your house bought out?
Me?
On the end of...are you on that...lives on the end of Union?
No, I bought it on a hill.
Okay.
No.
Union, the end of Union Street, where Thatcher Brook and Winuski comes together. My place, where 175 acres are drained off the interstate, comes down that ditch into a way-too-small culvert. And when it gets full, it backs up to everything. There was...there's areas in the town that get a whole...Randall Street get a whole lot more water than other people that are in the floodplain like this. And the Bachelor Street, who maybe got three inches every time there was a flood. And I don't...I just feel like I haven't been listened to. And I've been coming here for like five years and sent letters and documentation, and I don't...people aren't getting it. So please, please. I mean, my husband wants to move and sell everything.
Kathy, I have another question. Do you have a specific change that you'd like to see within these setback requirements?
Yeah, I would like to have them be what they were when we are too.
So 2016 regulations, you prefer that they were setback to those?
Yeah. I...I feel like it's just, we have a beautiful village, and it's...and we're not Boston.
We are very aware of that.
Yes, please.
Hi, Cheryl Glor. I live on Clover Lane in Waterbury. So I don't live right in the village. My concern is, and it's not really a concern, but I'm a little sad and I'm a little disappointed because I'm looking at the amount of density that we're trying to get here in this district. And I am concerned about the height. I'm concerned about the closeness of the buildings. I understand the concept of how Stowe Street is. But what I really want all of us to remember is, we are a New England village. And I don't know if you guys noticed, but anytime I drive in from town from either side, I get to see the mountains. I get to see the trees. I get to see the fields. And the more that we cover those up, the less we're going to have to see those. And we're going to have to go out to enjoy what we currently enjoy right now in the village. So I'm a little sad that maybe we haven't taken that into account. We're just trying to jam everything in there as much as possible because people are saying we need more places to live. My other disappointment is, you know, we don't have the campus district yet. I know that belongs to the state, but that would really be a good opportunity to build a neighborhood, a new neighborhood of single-family homes or something like that. Not every family wants to live in an apartment or in a townhouse. They want to have their own space. They want to build their own equity. When they're renting, you can't build that up. I think we'd be losing an opportunity to take a lot of the green spaces that we have and turn those into apartments versus building up neighborhoods, which the village also does need. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, I do want to point out on here that the maximum height of mixed-use is 35 feet, and the neighborhood is 35 feet. It's only the downtown?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's where the downtown...
Forty-eight.
You got a great...
Oh, sorry.
News out here.
Yeah.
From the village.
Okay.
I'm thinking of the new one that's going to come up. Those beautiful maple trees are going to go today. And there goes the view that you had coming down Main Street.
Okay.
Totally different. A lot of people move here because of the village.
The New England village, that's a perfect...it's an excellent point.
Thank you.
Good points. Thank you. Anybody else? Go for it, Mike.
Well, I guess I just wanted to kind of summarize what I'm hearing here is that there is some interest in having space between buildings to maintain them or to keep views open or water to pass through or whatever. And you have an interest in trying to reduce the number of exceptions that are necessary for the DRB to review and that type of thing. So maybe there's some middle ground where there's four-foot buffer from the property line, so that it'd be like eight feet between houses or whatever. And then if somebody really wanted to build up to their property line, they could apply for that.
Or laser, yep.
Yeah.
We did hear...we also heard from the DRB concerns about distance and setbacks. And so that has also been brought to our attention as well for fire safety, for example, you know, so...
They want more, less, they want more.
Excuse me? Can I just finish? Sorry. So it...all of this is being taken in, and hearing the same conversation is good for us to hear. This is...I mean, we're all in this together, you know?
And I'm sorry, I did not thank you because I do know how much time you guys have spent on this. It's been like five years.
Oh.
A minute.
Somebody else had to...
Hi, sorry, it's Amy again.
Amy.
Amy Anderson, 25 North Main. So I just wanted to...because we have this experience where we are right on the property line on one side of our house, and the other side is our parking lot, I just want you to take into account standing seam roofs and the snow that comes off onto cars and the liability that poses. We actually couldn't put a fence up between houses on our property line for that reason. It would just be destroyed over and over. Our neighbor at one time, our older neighbor, was requiring us to, and the DRB said that it was just... We can't require it because you're going to require them to fix it every single, you know?
Can...I didn't 100% get that, and I want to make sure I get it.
So when you put houses too close together...
Yeah, I know that, but you have a standing seam roof that's...
I don't. My neighbor does.
They have a standing seam roof with a zero and with a zero setback. There's no place for the snow to go.
Right. It comes flying off, and it...
One of the...one of the requirements in our design review overlay district is asking, requiring someone who's going to make a change, who's doing something that requires a permit, to go before the DRB, there has to be a plan for rain, snow, ice removal.
Just ice guard, really. Snow guard can work.
Yeah, no, that's excellent.
We're just...it just has to be addressed by the applicant. That's what we're saying. So it's not like somebody could do something with total disregard for their neighbors. That's not going to happen.
They still have the same things they do now, like, oh, you can have bright lights coming in the windows or that kind of stuff that happens. I mean, the streetlights are way brighter than anybody else's, but...
That's a standard condition DRB applies, is downcast and shielded.
Yeah, we do have that. We actually have like design or development standards rather, which address lighting specifically, and downcast and shielded is a big part of that.
We spent a lot of time on it, and I encourage you to read it. It's about Standards of Development section.
I don't know where to find these.
It's right. It's the other page. The Standards of Development are...
If you go to the Waterbury Planning Commission page...
I know, but I'm just... Page 26.
Under the UDB update, it's on the top left. There's a link. That document pops up. So we have a formatted document. You can pull that off the website as a PDF.
He's going to it right now, so you can see it. Thanks. Bylaws?
That's...it has been there for a while. We did just format it, so it's much more user-friendly.
Just so that I'm really super confused, and I really feel dumb asking this question.
Oh, don't, please.
Is the downtown replacing and combining the mixed-use residential and neighborhood?
So let's...let's take a minute. Yeah, that's a really good question. Let's just take a minute and do the slider map. I think that's...you put a lot of work into it. And we really thank Dana for this GIS work. You would not believe the time he has put into it. The other thing, and I'll say this credit for that, is we made sure that the zoning districts follow current parcel boundaries now. So there's not a lot that's split, has two different zoning districts. We just...I don't say we. Dana just cleaned up all of those lines. And because of the multiple different zoning districts, now you can see that there's fewer districts.
So the red...okay.
So this is the current downtown district, okay? Now, if you watch slowly, Dana's going to go across, and the red gets bigger to the north.
Which includes your property, it sounds like.
Thank you.
Right?
Does that clarify?
Yeah.
This is...this is online. We'll have this on the Planning Commission page. It'll be the slider map. One thing I would... One thing I would like to, sorry, one thing I'd just like to point out, we do have a version of this map on our outreach document, the story map, which has all these storyboards and that sort of thing. That particular slider map is outdated, so please, when we link this slider map on the main planning commission page, just use that one for reference. That has the most up-to-date zoning districts, reflects all the information that we got during the information hearings, et cetera.
Can't we take down the other one?
Are they dated?
Let's, let's... We're just going to take down the other one. So we, I, I don't want two maps up there.
Or two documents.
Yeah, that would have problems. All right.
Do we have other questions?
Yeah, you can really get sucked into that slider, let me tell you.
I can do that.
I can too. Yes, sir, right here.
Just a point of clarification. This will drive a lot of others of things that need to be addressed, correct?
Such as?
Buildings that probably need to be addressed that are dilapidated, falling down, those kind of things.
The zoning regulations will not do that.
That's a whole different zoning set of rules that have to be developed, correct?
Well, that's more like enforcement, where's Neil?
Ordnance.
Or, ordinance.
Big and or abandoned building ordinance.
Yeah, that kind of thing. So that, this supports that, but it doesn't drive it.
Right.
Okay, makes sense, thank you.
And there may, you know, the planning department with discussion will, I don't know how to say it, will look at other ordinances as, we have new people and new energy and current legislation and opportunities. I mean, it's actually, I think, really exciting. So they're bringing to us suggestions and concepts and ordinance proposals that can help improve our town.
Because I, I've lived in, had homes in Ohio, had homes in different states with a lot of zoning requirements where I lived in Ohio. A lot of people didn't like them, but it was great because it protected my property, protected my neighbor's property, and it improved the quality of life.
You know what to expect.
Yeah.
I get it.
Even though I had to, when I fell a shed, I had to have it 40 feet away from the back lot, which is okay. But it's fine.
My friend Mary had a same zoning issue that... We hear about it.
That's true.
I compliment you on your work. It's good that we're doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alyssa?
Alyssa?
So my name's Alyssa Johnson, I live on South Main Street. I'm also on the select board. So comment was first just to thank the planning commission, who in addition to working five years for the past several months have been meeting weekly. I tried to go to most of their meetings and they overlapped with ours. But just to say like, weekly, two, two and a half to three-hour meetings for like years is what these folks have done. So just thank you and kudos to all of you. Dana Allen has also probably single-handedly saved the town thousands of dollars through his in-kind GIS services. So also special thank you for the slider map.
I'm waiting for that paycheck.
On the subject of budgets...
Volunteer paycheck.
If you'll allow it, Martha, only because it's slow, just to this gentleman's question about enforcement, I just wanted to say the budget that we have warned for town meeting for this year does include in the proposed budget $10,000 to do some legal work regarding zoning enforcement. Just recognizing, separate from this conversation today about what bylaws are adopted, the bylaws that are on the books need enforcement. Unfortunately, that often usually requires legal action. And just from the select board perspective, if we have a town or doing that and town staff are doing that, we want to make sure they're in good legal standing to do so. So just to say there is a proposed expense for the community, for the community to bone on at town meeting to have some funding to help support that moving forward. And otherwise, just listening to everyone and thank you.
No, I used to be on the DRB and for a lot of years actually and it got frustrating because there was no, there's no muscle to the regulations.
Sorry to ask, though, I live on Randall Street, we get flooded. We've experienced that a couple of times. Now that you have that floodplain area, can you do things with that?
The conservation, the allowed, this is, this is what I think is really, really, well, I mean, we, to Kathy's point earlier, we really did think about what it has been the impact to the community with these floods. They allow, I'm not going to get hurt fast enough, but the allowed uses in the conservation floodplain, none.
Not permanent, no permanent structure.
None.
Permanent structure.
You can't go in and do things that mitigate possible flooding in the future?
No, you can't build a structure.
No, you can't build a structure.
Oh, I'm not asking to build, I'm saying can you do things with that ground that possibly? And I'm not an engineer, so...
State owns that land, right?
Well, not all of it.
Because I know during the floods, the crown of the field, it can be seen at the height of the flood.
So we're permitting the use, not the, not...
Not the work.
Right, right.
Okay, that makes sense.
So there, what I meant was that there's no allowed, there's no permitted uses in that area. And then there is a conditional use of recreation or park or public, public outdoor recreation and park.
Okay.
So we're trying to not put things in the floodplain.
Well, you wouldn't want to, my, my question is can whoever owns the property do things to possibly help us mitigate the flooding in the future? So...
Right.
But that's a bigger question probably, a lot of people are trying to...
Exactly. I think the state was also looking at that.
Yeah, I, I hope so, let's hope.
Roger?
Yeah, Roger Klappe, I live on Randall Street, I'm also on the select board. I just wanted to respond to his question. We are looking at possible mitigation involving that, the cornfield to create more volume for the water to reside and possibly look at ways to restrict the flow of water into the Randall Street and downtown areas just the way that the state did when they redid the complex, which has protected the state complex from the most recent floods. Thank you.
Roger, are you looking at our way too?
We're looking at the entire Winuski corridor and Thatcher Brook.
I, I just want to add one thing for what happened to us after they redid the road. They, because they took out so many layers of pavement, the road is lowered. So now we get even more water because it comes out that the drains are below where the river is. So it's, it's just like, that's what I'm saying, look at what else happens because it...
Mike, I think you have a question?
Yeah, there's a proposal for a wildlife passage at the northern end of the town. I was just curious if there was a conservation district that aligned with that because it's, it would be silly to build a very expensive structure and then have housing or something right there.
You're referring to the project on the ABR?
You're talking about phase two area on the north side of the interstate?
It's going to be connecting the north and the south. So I just wanted to, you know, the agency built a wildlife passage as part of the Essex project there, 189 or 289, and the housing got built up all around it, so it can't be used for wildlife anymore. So I'm just curious if it was conservation district where this proposed wildlife culvert?
Very, very possibly. We just haven't addressed that at this point. We have a conservation floodplain because that was, we called it that and it's, we want to call attention to, we have a huge floodplain in this part of our town. We know we have other conservation needs, we just haven't named them or gotten to what the district boundaries might be, but we, we're very clear.
Well, I'm not.
Things like that.
Wait a minute, I guess I'm missing what Mike is saying.
They had a couple of million bucks for a feasibility study to look at.
But is it in the phase one area?
No.
Well, there's heads nodding yes.
Well, it's under the interstate. It goes under the interstate.
That's what I thought.
Under Route 2.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Oh, not, not the, okay.
No, so hold on, yeah. So we don't have that and it would be great to get it from them.
No, and, and part of the reason that we don't have that taken into consideration is that's a relatively recent development.
Yeah.
And so these district boundaries were set, I think preliminarily, as many as three years ago.
Yeah.
And then we've tweaked them recently, but only for the phase one area. There is a phase two area, so that's part of the whole unification thing. So, and that's everything outside of essentially the highway. So I think that's good information for us to have.
Can you send that to us?
Yeah, the location is where, generally?
Katie's got it, Katie's got it.
Dana, can, Lisa's letting me from Waterbury, but it's Sharkyville Road. So you're at that end, the left-hand side there, Neil. It's where Sharkyville Road comes into Route 2. And I'm not sure on that spot where the highway, where 89 is, if it's on the left or... It's right near the Bolton Line.
I didn't know they were moving forward.
And there, we have a story about it and the, it's going to be going under multiple lanes. It's going to be going under the highway and I think also under Route 2.
Yeah.
So it's going to be coming into that, the green zone that you've, you've got delineated there.
It's a development section?
It's, it's a big, it's a big lane that they're going to create under the highway. It's like an underpass for, and then underpass for wildlife, yeah. But it doesn't look like there's any development allowed in this new, well, probably...
That's what I just wanted to clarify because...
If that's where it is, yeah.
But I think your point also is that when we get to phase two, we want to be cognizant of the other side of the highway and what is being, zones are over there.
You got it.
Right here.
Yeah.
There actually is a culvert there that goes underneath the highway and Route 2. There's a big pipe there.
And the state's many millions, many tens of millions of dollars short of actually building it. Just essentially a feasibility study, or they call it a design...
That's what I hear about.
...through the design for the amount of money that they've put together at this point.
Thanks for that, Mrs., that's good to consider. Do we have other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for talking.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.